All right. Thanks. Okay, got it.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting of Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. We have two items on the agenda. The first of these is discussion regarding the economic development agreement for the Rock Creek Entertainment District. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Emily Palmeroy, lawyer with the Center for Economic Development Law. We're representing you, the city, in trying to analyze the proposed project, the Rock Creek Entertainment District. A project plan, including an economic development agreement, that would be used to implement the project plan. So in this pre-council meeting, we wanted to talk more specifically about the economic development agreement, which, as you know from the meeting on September 3rd, we were still in the process of negotiating. So we have now a negotiated economic development agreement, and that's been in your packets. So we just wanted to take this time to talk about it in some detail and try to answer any questions that you might have. So some of this will be redundant, so forgive me for that, but just to make clear, as you already know, the project plan itself is a legislative act and is not a contract. It's the economic development agreement that will implement the project plan. And the assistance and development financing that's contemplated in the project plan must have a development agreement that authorizes the expenditure. So we're here today, again, to talk about where this agreement stands. So as you saw, there was a memo from late June that identified some issues for council to consider, and we've continued to try to address the issues that were identified in that memo. And we wanted to report back to you on where those stand. In the economic development agreement, Section 1.03 provides a reduced scope for the project based on representation from the landowner, with acknowledgement that the project will spur the rest of the $1.1 billion in areas outside of the specific project as defined in this economic development agreement. The construction timeline is provided for, both in outside date deadlines and in the process for adopting a phasing plan to set deadlines for the specific components. So these are meant to address issue number one. That was in the June memo. Council had identified several concerns, some of which have been addressed, including a dedication of space for public art, support for new business improvement districts, stormwater There is recitals about addressing concerns related to housing and transit. Employee wages is not specifically addressed in the economic development agreement. We have addressed... Oh, yes.
Just real quick.
Oh, yeah.
On that last point, the no commitment on arena employee wages, like, we, as a city, don't really have the ability to enforce something like that, do we?
The city's only way would have been through this economic development agreement, and then we could have tried, we endeavor to... It would be them agreeing to pass that obligation on to others.
Right.
So it's kind of a secondary, tertiary obligation, but that would have really been the only, you know, power that the city would have had in trying to enforce that.
Now, if we owned and operated the arena ourselves, we could have, we would have been the others that you're describing, passing it off to.
Yes. I think I would still argue that might even be difficult because it would, we would still have to engage an operator.
Okay.
Right, to run the arena, so I think even that might have presented some difficulties.
I just know that was a big desire of council, and I just want to kind of highlight why it was difficult to achieve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Since we have so many people paying attention, so when you say "recitals," what legal obligations do those carry?
Let's see, are you referring to the housing and the transit?
Yes.
Yes. They don't carry any strict obligations for them to, you know, pay to put in transits. What they do do is just acknowledge that those are desires of the city and that they will work with the city to try to address those concerns.
If they don't come to fruition, there is no remedy for breach of contract on that.
Right. There's no specific obligation with remedy to, for example, pay for and put in transit throughout the project area.
Okay. Thank you for the extra clarity.
Sure. Okay, so we have addressed the master developer and recipient of the assistance concern that was previously identified, the inclusion of the Cleveland County Trust that's been established as a party resolves that issue. There are cross covenants and obligations that are enforceable by the parties, including acknowledgements that both project components are dependent on the other, and that the anchor project cannot happen without the public assistance being provided. So we feel that that issue has been adequately addressed in the draft that's in your packet. So assistance and development financing, that was a big, a legal concern that we have. So we feel like we've remedied that. There's no unconditional revenue pledge toward the Cleveland County Trust debt. So this is truly framed as providing assistance and development financing. The Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority enforcement mechanism to ensure the project as a whole is built lies in its review of the evidence of financing for the anchor project. So the authority will effectively enforce anchor project financing, the provider of the anchor project financing, to enforce those development obligations, or it'll deny approval of those evidence and payment will not begin. So when they are submitting their phasing plan and development plans, there will also be a component of evidence of financing that the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority will have the ability to approve or deny. Okay, so now, kind of higher level, we want to talk more specifically about the structure of the agreement. As we alluded to just a moment ago, the parties are the city, the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, the landowner, and this new Cleveland County Trust that was recently set up. The landowner and the trust are collectively called the developer parties. They're agreeing to spend at least $650 million to build the project, which consists of two separate and co-dependent components, the anchor project and the mixed-use project. They will build those in exchange for the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority provision of assistance and development financing. The anchor project, which is to be financed and construct, excuse me, financed, constructed, and owned by the trust, will be an 8,000-seat arena, a 1,200-space parking garage, and related infrastructure. The mixed-use project, which is to be financed and constructed by the landowner or the landowner's assinees, includes a community plaza, 140,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, up to 180,000 square feet of Class A office space, 150-room hotel, 500 multifamily housing units, 177 medium-density housing units, or additional multifamily units and related infrastructure. The assistance and development finan... Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Sorry. The, okay, the mixed-use part is the restaurant and entertainment part, is that mixed-use? Is there any mixed-use? And by that, I mean, commercial residential, though?
No.
None of it in this whole development is mixed-use?
Yeah, I think our terminology is meant to apply to the whole, not in, not stacks. So maybe that's a bit of a misnomer, but our mixed-use, we're meaning for the whole. So there are mixed uses in the development that is obligated to be performed under the EDA. So the structure is assistance and development financing in a pay-as-you-go format from TIF 4, which is a sales tax increment district, and TIF 5, which is an ad valorem increment district, up to $600 million plus any leverage act funds. Talk about that here. So the assistance and development financing is part of the Norman Tax Increment Financing Authority's obligation under the economic development agreement. Those payments will not commence until specific conditions are met. Those conditions in the economic development agreement are the authority's approval of a phasing plan for the entire project and development plans covering the entire anchor project. The transfer of title or effective control of property for the anchor project, and the filing of payment in lieu of taxes covenants. Assuming those conditions precedent are met and the developer parties are not in default at the time of commencement, assistance payments to the county trust will begin in the lesser of the following amounts: 100% of the ad valorem increment, less 2%, or $200,000 per year for admin costs, which will go to the city, plus 100% of the TIF 4 sales tax increment, plus 100% of any leverage act funds. Or such amounts that I just described that are necessary for the amount of assistance paid to equal the amount that the trust has incurred in paying the principal interest and fees on the anchor project financing. So it's the lesser of those two. Or such amounts described necessary for the aggregate assistance payments to total $600 million, plus the leverage act. So we have protections to the authority in there that it's the lesser of those three. And once we've met whichever of those three is the lesser than the obligation to pay assistance in. The TIF 4, TIF 5, and leverage act funds are the only sources of revenues that are available for the payment of assistance, so it depends on the project actually generating those revenues. No other city source of funding is at risk. Any amounts of assistance that are paid beyond what is needed in a given anchor project financing payment are still applied to the public assistance limits. Again, those are protections so that we're not overpaying based on what it costs to actually finance, based on what it costs for the county trust to actually finance the anchor project. The EDA gives the trust the right to assign its rights to the assistance payments so that it can secure its financing. That's typical in the projects that we work on. So it's really important in this structure that the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority review the development plans and the financing capacity, that evidence that's provided with those development plans, that strictly reviewing that to ensure that those financing requirements provide adequate assurances that the whole project will get done is really where the leverage is on the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority in providing the assistance. So we just wanted to highlight that. Okay, of course, in the economic development agreement, the other parties also have significant obligations. The developer parties submit a phasing plan for the entire project to the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. That must happen on or before March 15th of 2025. The phasing plan is for the project as a whole, including which project components will be completed in each phase, the construction timelines for each phase, and anticipated investments for each component of the phase, in each phase. And Norman Tax, again, the authority will use its reasonable discretion to review, approve, disapprove, or provide additional requirements on the phasing plan. That will happen within 30 days. Once the phasing plan is approved, the respective developer party will submit development plan for each phase to the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. The development plans include drawings, site plans, visuals to show the components in that phase, a budget showing the full costs of construction, evidence of financing, again, reiterating that, including collateral assurances that the project will be built, construction contracts, et cetera, to fund the, to fund the full cost of each component in that particular phase, and then any other information that the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority reasonably requests.
Emily, would you define reasonably? I know that's a lawyer word, but what else could be requested other than those documents or budgets or whatever else?
Yeah, we, and our experience in other projects, we try to be pretty holistic in how we listed them in Section 303 and 403, because we didn't want to leave, you know, a lot of room for question, but we also, you know, each phase will be different, and we want to leave room for the authority to say, like, hey, how does this relate to this? Or, you know, just reasonably request other information. It's not to, you know, stifle the deal, it's really just to be informative. We're asking for information to help inform how this project relates to each component.
Yes, sir. Can you provide some clarity on the sales and use tax with the construction materials and how we're guaranteed that comes from Norman, stays in Norman?
Sure. So the TIF, the TIF does contemplate a construction sales tax, and we provide, the EDA provides an obligation for the developer parties to require that materials for the construction of the project be delivered to the city of Norman. And they will have to track that and provide proof based on receipts that that has happened, and the city will use that to reconcile the construction sales tax that's generated from the project itself. And when it does that, then that will be, those sales taxes are considered increments and provided to the apportionment fund. So it does require developing, reporting by the parties and coordination with city staff to make sure that they're receiving the information necessary to track it. So it is a bit of an administrative extra on city staff, but in this project, it looks to generate a pretty significant amount of sales tax revenue. And we know from our negotiation with the developer parties that because it is generated more quickly than the ad valorem increment, they're really relying on it as kind of a kickstart for their financing package. That's also sales tax increments that may be matched under leverage act. So important on both sides to try to maximize the amount that's collected because it would maximize the amount that's matched by the state.
Councilmember Holman. On the leverage act part, again, would you remind us, it's not guaranteed funding. Is this whole project reliant on getting that full funding from the leverage act?
So any leverage act collect, any leverage act matching funds collected are, in addition to the incremental revenues that will be paid as assistance and development financing under the economic development agreement. So we will, the city makes the application for the leverage act funds. So it will be relying on reports that it already has and potentially additional reports if those are necessary, that it will submit to the state. I think we're all aware of the conversations that have occurred that indicate that the potential for a match looks good, but there is, there is a requirement that we show new net revenue to the state. So I'm not claiming that every sales tax increment will be matched one for one. I think that's, you know, irresponsible. I know that Ms. O'Connor and her projections did a very conservative review of what the state might match, and I think we based it on 50%, I'm gonna, okay, 50% sales tax being matched, but the, under this arrangement, all of that would go to the developer on top of the incremental revenues under the project plan.
So that means less, less increment is needed if the more leverage act money comes in?
All it means is that they would potentially pay their debt sooner, which, under those three, the lesser of things that I described, they would meet their obligation first, and the assistance payments would end.
And since our, our payments as a city is related to assistance and development financing, the earlier that we can unwind that financing, the less that it's going to cost the city of Norman.
Right. So if they pay under this agreement, if they end up paying their debt more quickly, that means that the TIF district will end more quickly, and the revenues will flow to the taxing jurisdictions, city included, once the TIF district ends.
And you said it has to be shown that it's new, 50% new, was it?
No, the, the state's calculation under the leverage act is not one that I can articulate from, from memory, but what the basis is, is that, you know, the city has to show that what is net new to the state. So like, if we're receiving new hotel visitors, if we're receiving visitors that wouldn't otherwise come to Norman, that can be used to calculate the net new benefit to the state. And if that is indeed the case, to some level, then the state will match the city's portion that it is contributing to the project through the sales tax increment.
So a, they don't count someone that's currently going to basketball games at Lloyd Noble Center, they count someone that would go to the new one that isn't going, isn't coming to Norman currently?
That would be part of their analysis, but it's also significantly more in-depth. It would be based on new jobs, new hotel stays, new spending generally. So it would be significantly larger than just, you know, visitors to the arena, but that would be one component of the analysis. And I think based on Commerce's initial look, the project has changed a bit, so, you know, they'll be, they'll look at a new study to show what the revenue would be, but, you know, they had a very favorable review. A lot of their analysis will also be based on the housing component, you know, who is buying these houses from elsewhere, right? Who is moving to Norman to live in these houses? Not just someone that lives in Norman here, not, you know, currently, and buys this house. That would not be included in their net benefit analysis because it's not new to the state. So there's a lot, there's layered factors that they would be reviewing, and I don't think we can, you know, or should reasonably say at this structure how much would be matched. I think on behalf of the city, we'll be working really hard to make the case, you know, as, why they could or can or should match one for one, but I, there's no guarantee that they'll do that.
And Councilmember Holman, we, we've looked, that calculation from the State Department of Commerce, it's not a formula on a website where you plug in numbers and it gives you what your match is. They do analysis and magically, a number appears. So we asked for their participation in the development of the project plan, so they had eyes on it as we worked our way through this process, so that they would have real understanding of what it is that is being proposed. So I think we, we started, you know, at the very beginning with the Department of Commerce in, in search of what would be Norman's very first application to receive leverage act dollars, and this project does have the lion's share of elements that, that seem to check boxes up there. And as it relates to Councilmember Peacock's point, the ability to receive those leverage act dollars and pay down that instrument as efficiently as possible, we're, you know, currently in a higher interest rate environment than we were, you know, years ago. Mr. Francisco did some brilliant financing where we were under 1% interest rates in some recent instruments. So in our conversations with bond counsel who would put together that financing for the county public trust, to be able to make sure that that instrument is developed in such a way when extra revenue is available that it could be paid off quickly or refinanced if there's a nice reduction in interest rates, and all of those things help us pay it off more quickly.
I think you kind of answered my question there at the very end. This, this deal has the opportunity to be refinanced if interest rates become more favorable, correct?
That is the, that is the objective.
But one key point, the city nor the authority is doing any financing.
Correct.
So that's not, I mean, it would be, you know, maybe the county trust might refinance.
But since our, ours' payments as a city are tied to that financing, you know, a higher, a higher percentage just means more money from the city of Norman, so a lower percentage would mean, yeah.
Right, and they're, of course, also incentivized to get to finance at the best terms that they can possibly get, because it's going to take a lot more than just the incremental revenues from this, from the, from the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority to make the project happen. I will say that the city manager hit on one point, the elements for state match are there, and by that I mean the very high-level elements, which are, we are considering a TIF district, a sales tax TIF district, where the city is contributing sales tax revenue in an enterprise zone. These are two, you know, key components for leverage act matching. So, you know, there will be an opportunity in the application to the state to check, you know, those very key core high-level boxes. I know there's been conversation about the project being eligible, and I just, I think that at a very high level is what is meant by that. Okay, so I was speaking about the phasing plan and the development plan, and the important components of the development plan, including evidence of financing. These development plans that are submitted by the developer parties are separate and in addition to regular zoning and plating and building submittals. So these are more demonstrating compliance with the project description and investment levels. So they just, these are on top of those things that would be required of, of the development if it weren't receiving any assistance. So this, this slide is, so this slide is the landowner obligations related to the mixed-use project. This slide is the county trust obligations related to the arena project. So, you know, they're similar, right? We'll see a lot of overlap. Once the development plans are approved, the respective developer party, whether that's the trust or the landowner, completes that construction pursuant to the approved development plan and within the timeframe required. Any material change to the phasing plan or the development plan would have to be resubmitted to the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. And then we've got overall dates and deadlines in the economic development agreement. So the anchor project must start construction by January 1 of 2026 and be completed by December 31 of 2029. The mixed-use project must start construction by January 1 of 2026 and be completed by December 31, 2032. Obviously, that one has more components and more developer parties, so will take longer to develop. Once any component of the project is completed, the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority will confirm that it was built according to the development plan that it approved and issue a certificate of completion for that component. During construction, the developer parties are required to make detailed progress reports to the authority on the construction progress, this is related to the reporting, and report all sales taxes paid by their contractors on construction materials. The anchor project will be subject to the payment in lieu of obligations designed to ensure that it contributes to the TIF revenues. If the arena, for example, is tax exempt, it would, they would still be obligated to pay, payment in lieu of taxes. The landowner contemplates assigning different development obligations to certain development partners. So the EDA pre-approves the two known development partners, which are Rainier and Lincoln. So those are permitted assinees for specific components of the mixed-use project. Any other development partners that the landowner may desire to assign obligations or rights to must have approval by the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority. So that's my outline of the structure of the EDA. I know it's a lot of information, and it includes a lot of compromise and negotiation by, by both parties. We do think that the compromise related to... We do think that the compromise related to the approval of evidence of financing in the development plan is enough to ensure that this is not a debt pledge and remains assistance in development financing, which we see as a key legal issue. So we feel more confident about that. It might not be the most ideal solution, but we do feel like it is a workable compromise from the city's side.
Thank you, Ms. Emily.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, is consideration of adjourning into executive session as authorized by Oklahoma Statute 25, 307B4 to discuss pending litigation of the case of Ulydne versus the City of Norman, EEOC charge of discrimination, and gives a number. I need a motion to adjourn the other special session and convene an executive session. We are now in executive session.
All right, I'm way more fun than they are. All right. Let's talk about this case that we have pending. We talked before about EEOC complaints. This is another one that we got that was...
Okay, just so you know, you guys are still streaming right now.